Call the meeting to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any citizens requesting speaking?
No.
Alright, then we move on to construction update, turn over to Nick.
It's actually superintendent's reports, I know it's the favorite part of the meeting, so I will be brief. Uh, construction update, um, just a couple of, couple of things you can click on, that just came this afternoon. What it is, it's just some pictures around the site. Uh, it's Kraus Anderson's bi-weekly around the site newsletter, so feel free to click and we're not gonna go through all of those items, uh, 'cause it's a hundred pages long, but you can kinda see what's happening around the site. Just a couple of, uh, updates. Uh, last week, we met multiple times, uh, with, uh, for construction. Um, we did, uh, last week, uh, start, or I guess enter into an agreement with the third party, uh, John Rodell from the Rodell Group, uh, to help us out with, um, owner's representation services. As we, uh, um, move into the final stages of the project. Um, obviously, right now, the biggest concern is running out of money. Uh, as we continue to move through the renovation process and, um, we are working to look for areas where we can value engineer, but still keep the, um, you know, the design intent of what we want to do with the building. Uh, we've run across a couple pretty big items, uh, just on Thursday, it was brought to my attention that the, um, what the architect was planning on doing on the east side of the building for the exterior wall is not possible, it doesn't meet code. And so, um, and what essentially it is, is when they took all the ceilings down on the east side, the insulation stuck up beyond the drywall above the ceilings. You can't have exposed insulation, it has to be either covered with drywall, or, um, it has to be covered in some type of flameproof stuff so that if there's a fire that breaks out, it doesn't start on fire and create that toxic kinda styrofoam-y smoke, as you, as you know. Um, so, we were given three options. Uh, the cheapest of which is about forty-six thousand dollars to deal with, which is tearing everything off the exterior walls and basically spray foaming and starting over and then studying those walls up. We've had our owners rep look at the options, um, I mean, we don't have a choice on it because it has to be done now. In the end, who ends up being financially responsible for this might be a different story, but, um, this is, this is the east side of the building, so, um, where all the, where all the classrooms are that they're renovating. You know, they've torn all the walls out. So, this would be the exterior wall they were planning on keeping. Um, so if you go to page thirteen, or no, that's not it. Um, trying to find one that will show you a picture of exact... This is an existing area that, um, the drywall was existing, it was gonna stay, and basically it was just gonna get painted out. Um, is all that was gonna happen, uh, but that doesn't, that can't happen now. So, um, so we are working through how to, how to best fix that in the most cost-effective way, but also the safest way. Um, so, okay, here we go, page forty-two, Tim. Keep going down. Keep going down. Almost there. Okay, there you go. So, if you see on the left side there, you see the guy crouching down, you see how the white drywall goes up to about, just above the window there? Above that is exposed styrofoam insulation. You can't have that, it's gotta be covered with something. So, if we just cover it with drywall, it's actually more expensive than if we rip everything out and start over. And the reason being is we get a pretty good-sized credit from them not having to patch in all the windows and things like that. Um, and so, we're waiting on, one of our things, our, our new owners rep has said, they've, he said, you know, the architect needs to make a recommendation as to what the district should do with this because they own the outside of the envelope of the building, and that's the area that you run the highest risk for mold if you don't do something right, obviously. And so, um, so we're waiting on the architect to make that recommendation, it was supposed to come on Friday, it didn't happen, then it was supposed to come on this morning, it still hasn't happened yet, and so, we're anticipating that that should come tomorrow morning, we've, we've met and, for a long conversation this morning. Um, but we need a, we need a recommendation because all the walls are out, and it's cheaper to do it now because everything's wide open. Uh, if they wait to do this, um, then it's gonna get more expensive. And so, um, so I anticipate having that response shortly, and then we'll have to decide, again, whose responsibility it'll be, but we need to, need to move the project along. So, uh, we also have an issue where if you see where those windows are on that same wall, there's giant, bigger windows cut open in that wall. There was nothing in the plans that actually held the brick on the outside of the building from falling down when the windows are cut open. So, there's a forty-seven thousand dollar change order to put in lintels to hold the block on the outside of the building. Um, and, uh, so again, it's, we, we can't not do it, but we're gonna have to sort out financially who's gonna be responsible for it, um, as we work through this process. Uh, just, we've been hit by a couple of these pretty big change orders that they just shouldn't have been there. So, um, you know, another, if you go down about three more pages, Tim. Another example of a big, keep going, keep going, of a big change order. Um, if you see, okay, you can see the demo robot, the guy, the yellow guy is controlling the demo robot right there, and he's, he's casting place beams, that was a eighteen thousand dollar change order 'cause they weren't on the demo plan to remove, but they have to be removed in order to put the steel across there to carry the track. But not only does that create an issue for us, but if you look just above where he's removing that stuff, um, they didn't call for any finishes on that wall, it was just gonna get painted out. Well, obviously, if you look at that wall, that can't be a finished space, so we had about a twenty-three thousand dollar change order to go all the way around the track with drywall to cover that stuff up because, I mean, we just, we can't paint up a wall that has holes in it and everything else. So, again, um, we're keeping the project moving, but, you know, we're gonna have to have some additional conversations long-term as we kinda do a forensic audit of the project and some of the issues related to the project and, you know, potential responsibility of those involved. So, um, it's been a, it's been a tough go, the last couple of, uh, last couple of weeks. Uh, we were working to, like I said, keep the project on time and keep it moving along, but, um, you know, these things that were foreseeable, that had we known these things, you know, weren't in the design originally, um, should've been, you know, could've been corrected a long time ago, then we would've been carrying these costs. Not that we wouldn't have paid some portion of this had it been in design, but right now, we basically pay a premium for everything because it's all in change orders. And so, um, that's been the biggest concern through the process. Yeah, I mean, considering it was on the plans from nineteen seventy-four, and if you walked in our building, you could see them there. I mean, they weren't hidden in a wall. Um, so, you know, the, the big beam across the top, you could argue that, you know, you couldn't see that, but it was on the drawings 'cause it's what held the roof up. So, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's a problem, and essentially what's happening on quite a few of these issues is, um, a set of plans that maybe, uh, were not as complete or thoroughly vetted as they should've been. You know, we're constantly just dealing with that, and, um, you know, we've made several requests to get more engineers on site, they all came on site on Tuesday. Um, they are now gonna be on site at least monthly. Uh, Bray is having additional personnel on site. Um, and then obviously, we have our owners rep to kinda push back and forth with some of these things. You know, some of these things, it's, it's not a matter of, are we going to do them, we have to do them, it's just a matter of who's gonna be responsible for them because if we don't demo that out, you can't put the floor of the track in, you can't put the, you can't put the roof on. I mean, the building sits like that. So, um, that's been some of the biggest frustrations associated with the project is, is these pretty big change orders that we don't have much of a choice on, as we work through it. So, um, we're continuing to, to work through these items and look for ways to, um, try to, I guess, for lack of a better term, stop the bleeding on some of these things, and it's just, again, I would, I would argue that probably seventy-five percent of the change orders have been design-related with probably another, you know, fifteen percent unforeseen conditions and maybe ten percent owner-related. Like, for example, um, underneath the, um, stairs, we decided to put in a closet because it was just gonna be empty space, so we decided to put a door there so we could store folding chairs and things like that. Well, it's like an eight thousand dollar door, by the time you have to put sprinklers in there and drywall and things like that. But that's understandable, we understand that, it's better use of that space. Um, so we have some of those items in there, so, but-
You said, how many of those PS numbers are we up to?
We're up to almost two hundred project supplements, and we're up over nine hundred change orders at this point on the project. We have probably about eighteen, nineteen million dollars of construction to do. Um, um, they, they said, you know, maybe five or six hundred on a project this size, but you gotta remember, we're still almost a third left of money spent, and so, um, one of the things is, you know, with about eighteen to twenty million left in construction and about four months left to do it, um, we need to be spending, uh, roughly a million dollars a week, and that's a lot of work. Um, to spend that much money, so that's a lot of labor, that's a lot of decisions, that's a lot of, um, basically what's happened is between the owners rep and myself and Jim Stasakol, I mean, we're basically on site every day, several hours a day, because if we're not, then they get to a point where they can't continue to move forward, they have to know, can we move forward on this, can we not move forward on this, on certain items? And, uh, Bray is now getting on site more, you know, because some of these issues have lagged for so long, and now they're at the, kind of the point where they need a decision.
Microphone, Rob. I appreciate you being on site and Jim Stasakol, uh, but we've hired, you know, Kraus Anderson and Bray, specifically Kraus Anderson, if you're having to be on site all that time helping the project move forward, I mean, help me to understand why, why you're there so much, obviously-
'Cause if I'm not, they'll just spend our money with, non-stop. I mean, essentially what'll happen is, I mean, if I'm not there saying, no, we're pushing back, a contractor should be eating that cost, or, because we've gotten to a point where, yeah, that would typically be a response from the CM, and typically, if everybody was doing what they should've been doing, we wouldn't be hiring our third party either to help us out with this process. Um, but, at this point, we, we can't just say, just, just do it, because it's just, it's just not getting done.
But you have to approve all the change orders, so do you have to spend that much time on site?
Yeah, because some of the times what'll happen is that they'll have to, we'll have to do a verbal approval prior to them going through a full set of, of vetting pricing. I mean, so, um, we won't get necessarily a project supplement that'll generate the actual written change order, but they'll have to start on, start down that path before that's even done. It's not a great, it's not a great process. Um, but the amount of work that has to be done on a daily basis, and we have not given Bray or Kraus Anderson the authority to just spend money as they see fit.
Right.
And that's, that might be the biggest difference, there are some districts say, hey, I'm gonna wash my hands of it. You have our contingency to use however you need to get the project done, and we just haven't done that.
Nor should we. The proportions you used earlier, the seventy-five percent for design change orders, fifteen for unforeseen, ten percent owner, is that, is that speculation on your part, or-
That's speculation, I mean, we went back to that, um, we did this, remember, back in the early March, we kinda ran through the COR list. I'd have to go back and look at it now, and it, it takes about eight to ten hours to dig through that list and, and re-code them all. And so, I can do it again, but I mean, there's been some pretty big change orders that have happened in the last, you know, two months, three months, that are purely design-related. Twenty-six thousand dollars for missing roof drains. Um, you know, forty-six thousand for the lintels, forty-five thousand, forty-six thousand for the drywall condition, twenty-three thousand dollars for this drywall on the outside of the gym box. Um, we had probably equivalent to what, Jim, sixteen, eighteen thousand dollars in valves? And to seek, you know, so that we could isolate parts of the building. We had one, one for nine and one for like eighty-eight hundred, I mean, so, and then we had one for twenty-eight hundred to do bypass valves so we could get the, basically get the air on and F and L. Um, and that's something we're paying for outside the project. So, I mean, they just, they keep coming with these things and, and we push back, and some stuff, um, we say we're just, we're not paying for that. We're trying to enforce the contract essentially is what we're doing.
Have you had any luck getting the schematic design hours?
Um, the responses, you know, 'cause Rob had asked if I had gotten the schematic design hours from the architect, he's asked several times, he asked in this meeting, uh, how many hours they spent on site with no avail, and then I forwarded on Rob's email, he's asked for the fourth time, and Matt said he's supposedly pulling that information together and that we should have that by the end of the week.
And for everybody's benefit, schematic design is the process by which they, um, survey the building to understand conditions, unforeseen things potentially, um, just to get their arms around what, what our building is. Um, so it's, it's, it's a very important part of the process.
So, I mean, on a positive note related to construction, um, yeah, there are some really neat pictures of progress as you go through here, and, uh, it is looking, I mean, the areas that we're finishing up, I mean, it is looking really, really nice, and, uh, it is moving along quite, I mean, it's moving along, I mean, we just have these issues as it relates to these change orders that have been killing us on a lot of these things. So, um, a lot of progress, we have the construction committee meeting tomorrow. Um, and, uh, you know, it has changed drastically probably in the two weeks since, uh, since you've been on, been on site. Basketball hoops are up in the gym, gym is painted out. Um, you know, they're, they're cranking along, the ceiling's in in the media center, so that, you know, some of those pieces. The terrazzo, you know, about half of the locker bay has been polished and sealed, and so it's in its final condition. Um, you know, more of the painting has happened, uh, the, the servery has, uh, been gutted and, and is in the process of being rebuilt. So, lots of different, different things going on, on the site, and there's a lot of neat, um, neat things going on, but, um, obviously, some of these challenges related to the project, um, have a tendency to grade on those involved. So, other questions related to construction? Okay. Uh, as far as construction committee goes, we don't have it specifically on the agenda, we can, um, move it to next, next week's agenda, the actual appointment, or we can do it as part of the superintendent's report if you want. Otherwise, you know, I don't know, Jamie, what's your thoughts on-
Well, yes, and, and I wanted to make sure that I had, 'cause I had interest from several board members, but, um, what I, um, tomorrow morning, we have a construction committee, so the appointments would be, um, in effect for after tomorrow morning's meeting, but I was, uh, going to reappoint Sue and Rob and then appoint our new board member, Bob, to the construction committee. That was my intent, and Vicary expressed the interest of being, I don't know, um, a sub, and, um, so I appreciate everyone's interest in that.
We'd like to move those meetings to Thursday mornings early, if we could, because that's when our owners rep can be on site on Thursdays, so we're-
And that was the other reason for delaying it, because we were in the process of, um, you, you were still negotiating with-
Yep.
-Mr. Rodell and everything, but it did appear that Thursdays, and is it will be Thursday noons or Thursday mornings?
Thursday mornings, if that works better, or we can do it in the afternoons, I don't, I mean-
I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but you said mornings were a bit of a struggle?
Yeah, I thought we were talking actually like four o'clock or something.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, I mean, it can be either one, we used to do four o'clock on Thursdays, or on Tuesdays. So, we can do afternoon or mornings, I, I couldn't remember if you said afternoons were harder or mornings were-
I prefer afternoons, if it doesn't work with other people, we can do mornings if I'm not below.
It's gonna be primarily you and, and Rob, 'cause I think Sue's got a pretty flexible schedule. So, it's just, Thursdays tend to be the, uh, if we're gonna move from Tuesdays being our big construction days to Thursdays being our big construction days.
But when you say big, it, it, I, I counted there was gonna be three meetings in one week at, at one point, you know, between the Bray principal or representative and Kraus Anderson and-
So, we're moving the project managers' meetings to Thursdays from Tuesday as well, that's all the subcontractors, their project managers are gonna be meeting on Thursdays as well, when our owners rep can be there. So, that's the big meeting. There's a lot of different meetings that go on, but the big one is when they bring the project managers in from all the different trades as they work through the project.
Well, and I just think timing-wise, I think the four o'clock is better in that regard then, because then the construction committee meeting will be after, um, we've had that project managers' meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So-
That'll be fine.
So, I have a question about the, um, just the, the appearance of, we've been saying, you know, trying to stop the bleeding when they were here giving us that, that presentation. And, but yeah, we've got some big, huge things that came up right away again. So, I mean, are we getting the idea that they're just pushing it through and they're gonna throw the change orders at us, and this is all gonna get hashed out after the fact, or, I mean, we just have to get this thing done?
Um-
Or, I don't want it to spoil the good things of this.
Yeah. So, they'll be back in front of you next week, 'cause that's the thing, they're gonna be, every month, they're gonna be in front of the board, Kraus Anderson and Bray, uh, at the board work session every month, uh, until the project's done. Um, and I think those would be good pertinent questions to ask, I mean, it's, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard because some of these things, it's, it's as much as we wanna push back and say, this is not our mistake. I mean, at this point, you know, we, we don't have much of a choice to at least move forward and then look at how we're gonna recoup some of this stuff, because somebody might say, well, you would've paid for this anyway upfront if it would've been the drawings, and, and to some extent, that's true, but not the premium in which we're paying. And that's, that's the component that we're gonna have to look at after the fact to see what exactly is that as we work through it.
Not only the premium, but we also paid for their initial study that should've caught-
Mm-hmm.
-a high percentage of this, and that would be, that would be-
No, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, I mean, and I think, um, you know, Jamie stopped in at the meeting on Thursday when John was there, I mean, we were putting things out, this is, you know, here are ideas of how we can stop this bleeding, here are the things that need to happen. You know, um, I've been basically pleading with them since, you know, September on some of these issues of, can you stick your head above ceilings, can you do some of these things? And it's interesting is, you know, as I was bringing those things up and people would say, Nick, that, that doesn't have a whole lot of value, and then all of a sudden, we bring a new person in who, you know, John's background, he was the executive vice president of Fendorf and Sons prior to going out on his, going out on his own, and, uh, has a extensive background in construction, and a lot of the things that he says, why aren't we doing this, this, and this, are all things that, as a district, we've been asking for for months. And so, um, now it becomes-
And we're being told, oh, you, it's not necessary, it's-
It's unreasonable, I mean, I think, you know, um, that's the, that's the biggest, the biggest challenge. So, um, we, like I said, we had conversations this morning, uh, with the architect, uh, we had conversations on Friday with the CM. Uh, we'll ramp back up again tomorrow, um, but it's, it is, um, one of the problems we've had is people will say, okay, here are your three options, which one do you wanna do? And what John's pushback has been, no, 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 that's not how it works, you guys need to say, this is the recommendation of what you should do. There's also these other two options for less money, if, you know, if we can't afford them or things like that. So, pushing to have more ownership from the two companies that were paying to have ownership.
Has he reviewed the roof drain issue that I find-
He's reviewed the roof drain issue and, and your concerns, and so did Jim Stasakol reviewed them as well, because we were reviewing for where they terminate out, and where does that water create issues for us? And, um, you know, the two spots where we found it going across pavement and potentially causing issues for us, um, those have been resolved, it's been piped to different locations. And then the other issue is we made sure that the civil engineer, um, on the east side of the building, there's a couple of drains that, you know, kind of drain basins. We wanted to make sure that at the height of a heavy dr, uh, storm, can those drains handle not only the water they were designed to handle for the groundwater runoff, but also all this roof water runoff? And, uh, all those calculations have been done and have been verified that, yes, they can handle that water without anything, you know, backing back up into the building and things like that. So, we have that all, um, uh, in writing as to those calculations to ensure that the solution is, is not a subpar solution, so. John, that will not be any money, before we hired him, he had already had a pre-arranged vacation, um, that he could not back out of, but, um, he will be able to be at future meetings, you know, with the board and, and, uh-
Will he be able to supply us with, uh, questions-
Yes.
-that board may be able to ask?
Yeah, and I'll talk to him about that tomorrow.
Nick, what's, uh, this, John, this owners rep, do we have an idea what his fee is?
What his fee is? Yep. Uh, so, his fee is, um, the way it's set up is he's a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour for his time. Uh, and then, uh, he has, uh, and it's broken down in his proposal, uh, you know, he has a reduced fee for drive time whenever he is coming up on site, uh, and then, um, I mean, that's, that's, he basically figured he was gonna need, you know, anywhere from ten to twelve hours a week on the site, or on the job to basically provide us with feedback on change order requests, try to right the ship, get us back into some, um, different processes that could help, like we said, stop the bleeding. And then he has kind of a multi-phase approach, so it's like up through September, and then we'll see where we're at through September, 'cause that's when the bulk of basically everything's done, and then how much we wanna use them after September. So, on average, he's here, he'll be here every week, on average, it's about two thousand dollars a week to bring him in between his hourly rate and his, his, um-
So, for fifteen weeks, we're figuring around thirty thousand, and that's phase one.
Phase one, it's about thirty thousand dollars to bring him in. And then, you know, we look at phase two, which is essentially what happens between September and December, and then a potential phase three, you know, we may not have to use him much at all if we get things kinda back on track, but then kind of a phase three is kinda that potential forensic audit of the project after the fact and starting to look at, you know, some of the things that, uh, have people with different levels of responsibility.
But we will put his, uh, proposal and will be discussed by the board next week.
Yep. So-
Is, is he gonna bring engineering resources to the table to review mechanical, the structural issues?
Um, he is, I'll have to ask him, I mean, he, he does have a, he has a mechanical guy that he's been working with. Um, you know, some of the issues related to it have been more contract enforcement, like who should really be paying for this? Not necessarily is this the best fix, but should the district really be paying for this? And also enforcing our contract, um, and working through those items, and then getting on record saying, you know, pushing back on a lot of these items.
So, that'll take some of what you would be also keeping track of?
Yes.
And that over to him?
Yep. So, I mean, a lot of the things that we push back on what happens, and as Tim and I push back on stuff, is you're being unreasonable. That, you know, nobody does it this way. Well, John's been in the industry a long time, and for Tim and I, okay, well, when you constantly get pushed back, you're like, okay, maybe we are being unreasonable through this process, but when you have somebody that's been part of the construction industry at all levels, um, then you say, no, this, this is the industry standard. And, you know, he becomes kinda that expert for us to be able to say, no, 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 this is, this is not okay, you guys need to do it this way. And he knows the, you know, the levers to kinda pull. Um, with the meeting on, uh, Thursday, um, you know, we've been asking about windows in the gym. I said, you've painted out the gym, you've put in basketball hoops, and it's still open air. You know, I have concern that there's gonna be driving rain, and it's gonna get those things wet. Oh, Nick, you know, they're, they'll get there, they'll get there, they'll get there. I said, no, this is an issue, and John says, which one of you guys is assuming the liability when the basketball hoops don't work? Because you don't have a totally, you know, climate-controlled structure, and so, all of a sudden, lo and behold, a day later, the gym has now been plasticed in by the window contractor. You know, things that we've been asking for, for-
Well, the other example is air conditioning, asking for air conditioning to get that building cooled before, um, fall.
Yeah, I mean, we've been asking, I mean, we've been asking for air conditioning in the building to protect the finishes that are already installed, and also the contents that have now moved into the new part of the building. I bet we've been talking about that for, since September, Jim?
I don't think we started while it's snowing, so it's-
Yeah. We've been asking for these things. And so, then all of a sudden, it's, you know, well, you're, you're being unreasonable, you're being unreasonable, you needed this, and then, you know, he comes in and says, you know, what's the plan for this, what's the plan for this, and what's the plan for this? And then who's assuming liability when the finish is failed because you haven't provided air conditioning like you needed to? Then all of a sudden, before you know it, mechanical contractor is all of a sudden moving, and we have a plan in place to get the, you know, to get these things running, and, and, you know, it's, it's, um, again, it's, it's kinda, I think, knowing the levers, uh, or the buzzwords of- again, it's, it's kind of, I think, knowing the levers, uh, or the buzzwords apparently that probably get certain, certain people up, you know, from a standpoint of they realize they're probably not going to be able to snow. So. Any other questions about construction? Sorry that took you long.
But this, well, yeah, but it's a critical juncture because in January, we had questions and we were being told, oh, you're, you know, don't get so nervous. This is the way all projects go. It's just totally normal. That's what we were being told in January. Then in March, we had a meeting at the choir room, a work session with the board. And we asked them point blank, are we on time and are we on budget? And they said, oh, yeah, 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 we are. And then all of a sudden the change orders just keep coming and they're just as big and if not more frequent. So, um, we're running out of contingency and, um, I think it's right to have them come in once a month and I think it's a good idea to have, uh, John Rodel and, um, we'll talk about this more next week. But any other questions? All right. Next up, TSS committee update.
So just to give you a, just to give you an update and Andrea can chime in if she wants, but, um, so we have TSS committee meeting. So one of the things that the board has talked about is how are we getting feedback from staff on the teacher salary structure project? Um, we have, uh, TSS committee that's comprised of administration and teachers. This committee was put together long before I got here as part of the, it was the committee that actually put together TSS in general, the process and the program. Um, and so just an update, we have a meeting coming up on, on Thursday of this week in the afternoon. We'll review feedback and, and what's going on. And also look for, uh, suggestions and, and ways we can tweak the system to make it a, um, just continue to make it a better system, kind of a continuous improvement process. You know, I'm aware that, uh, you know, there, the, the teachers association, uh, did a survey on their own, uh, about what they think of TSS or what their members think of TSS. And I'm aware that they shared it with several of the board members. It never did get shared with me until I think Jamie for, ended up forwarding it on to me. Um, what was it about a week ago or something along those lines? Uh, I think it went to the three board members that were up for reelection. Is that, I think, Bob and Sue and Rob? Um, and it was like a synopsis of their survey from what I understand. I don't know what you guys got, but if it's what it got sent to me. Um, you know, there was some conversation that, oh, it went to administration and we didn't pass it on through. Dave and Andrea met with, with them. Uh, they didn't give a copy. They showed kind of summary items on there. But it was never given to us to share with anybody. Uh, we have a system in place to get feedback from staff. You guys have seen all of the feedback, uh, good, bad, and indifferent, um, uh, unfiltered. Uh, and so, um, you know, we'll continue to, you know, the proper process in which to get feedback on this, on the teacher salary structure is through the TSS committee that's made up of teachers and administrators. And so one of the things that, uh, we have told the association is you start to undermine your teacher representation on that committee by kind of taking your own route. Around the committee and, and making, you know, and working through some of those things. But, um, if you don't have it, uh, I'm not sure if they want, I, uh, it got shared with me, but I'm not sure if they want it shared with the whole board. I mean, we can, we can share it with the whole board, but it was just a synopsis. It was about nine pages long. A bunch of kind of bulleted kind of questions and things like that and statements and, um, but we didn't actually see the actual responses, or at least I haven't seen the actual responses. So just want to let you know, we're working through the update and, and, you know, as with anything, we didn't want to do a lot of tweaks to TSS over the last three years. Cause we wanted to get it fully implemented. Well, now we're fully implemented and now we're looking at making adjustments and changes to it. Um, that both, you know, are representative of things that principals have provided feedback on, but also things that staff have provided feedback on. With the understanding that, you know, going back to the old lanes and step system is, is just, at least from what I understand from the board, that's not a desire from the board to go back that way. Um, and so, you know, that's one of the things that we've talked about is, okay, how can we prove the existing system without throwing it out? We don't want to be some of our neighboring districts that have been through two systems already since act ten. So we feel, we, we have a good system. We just, it needs, it needs some improvements in certain areas. And so that's kind of what we're doing with that. The last one proposed TIF district number six, um, if you got a lot of information out of what I sent you, you did better than I did. Um, so this is the only information I truly have about this, uh, um, TIF district. So if you remember, we had TIF district, it must be five, I'm guessing, since this is six, TIF district five would have been the dog track. And essentially, um, if you remember, we had conversations at the board table, um, you know, uh, I had been the representative for the board. Um, it doesn't have to stay that way. If the board says, hey, we'd rather have somebody else represent us at the table than you, that's fine. Typically it's been the, either the, the, uh, county administrator or, you know, it's been somebody within the, the taxing district, uh, that's employed by the taxing district that's kind of represented the different groups. Um, the first meeting is coming up next week. Uh, I imagine that's when we're going to get the information on the district. I mean, we have the map. Uh, and what they're proposing, uh, but the map is really hard to read. Um, not exactly.
Really hard to read.
Uh, so I, I mean, I don't have any more information on this than, than what you guys, you guys have the whole thing. So i- it's not a, hey, I need you to tell me how you want me to vote on this because it's not a vote next week, but it's, I just want to make you aware that we got this information, uh, sent to us and that they have TIF district. From what I understand, it involves primarily almost the entire downtown. So, um, and just to give you an idea, in case you're not remembering or knew, um, what TIF districts are, basically what happens in a very, uh, layman's terms is they freeze the current value of the property in that district. And that's what we would continue to get property tax revenue from. And then any new value, you know, so like at the dog track, I think the value was like ten million dollars, let's say. And when it's all built out, it's going to be like two hundred million dollars of the value. Well, we keep generating property tax revenue based off of the original ten million. And then the city gets the other revenue based off the other hundred and ninety million. And so then they use that money then to potentially do improvements in the TIF district or to attract developers. Uh, to reimburse them for some of the improvements and things like that. Um, I'm sure the city would love to come in, do a presentation, uh, to the district. If you have questions or want more questions about this. The biggest concern I have, to be quite honest with you, is, uh, the downtown area is quite developed. Uh, I don't really think it's a blighted area unlike the dog track. Um, you know, that's somewhat of a, somewhat of a concern that I would have is that, uh, I know they're applying the rule of if not for the TIF district, would this development happen? Um, well, it might not, but it also may not need to be either. I mean, so, you know, I think the dog track made a lot of sense. It sat abandoned basically since, what was it, two thousand and one? Is that when it went under? Um, you know, seventeen years it sat empty, okay. But, uh, downtown doesn't exactly come across as the most blighted area, uh, you know, that we have. So, um, that would be my concern is that, you know, are we, are we using this as our new way of, in which we want to, you know, remodel areas of the city? Not saying that, uh, it's a totally bad idea, but I would have some concern because it seems to me like in the last five to 10 years, even though I've only been around for three, that there's been a lot of redevelopment downtown without a TIF district. Um, so I'm not quite sure what the, you know, what the impetus would be for, you know, starting it now, other than if there's a certain area that nobody really has interest in.
My concern with the downtown TIF districts would be number one is number six. You know, it's, it's becoming more prevalent and communities, municipalities are using it in a lot of other, you know, towns and communities. And it does take potential tax revenue away from the schools and, um, you know, it also adds, you know, debt load to the cities. So then if we have to go to referendum for something down the road, you know, we're having trouble hiring cops and buying ambulances the way it is because the debt load is high. And it's, I, I think a, a dangerous way to go. I, I would, you know, there's, how many diff- TIF districts are in effect right now and when will they be coming offline? And, you know, how many years will this TIF district?
This would be the second one that would currently be in effect because the last one prior to the dog track.
Number four.
Was number four, which was the business park. The, um, out by, you know, where, uh, off of Hanley there. Um, and so this would be the second, I mean, by percentage wise of, of percentage of property value that's in TIF, our district's pretty low. I mean, compared to some other districts, but I also wouldn't necessarily want to get higher either, you know. So if the board has interest, I'd be more than happy to see if, um, either the community development director or the mayor or, um, whoever's handling this forum wanted to come into potentially our July meeting and present kind of their, their side of why we should do what we do.
Well, I would totally agree with your assessment of downtown. You know, you have a couple of empty stores once in a while or a, a restaurant that goes under. There's no shortage of other restaurants that don't want to open up. So definitely different than the dog track.
Is there an appetite for me to potentially bring him in at a July work session? Or, or potentially regular meeting, July regular?
Which one? Yeah. Cause I don't know the timetable we'll have. You have a meeting on June nineteenth. And presumably also what's the consensus as far as having Nick continue in that capacity and then report to us? All right. And then, uh, I don't know. Do you think it makes more sense for the July ninth or the July twenty-third?
I mean, we can do July nine. I mean, that'd be the soon, the quickest turnaround. So what I can do is I can, uh, I can get ahold of the city tomorrow and find out when, what's the schedule on this thing? And then based on what the schedule is, kind of set when they would come in and present. Would that work?
I think, I think that works good. Yeah, we can just set the agenda accordingly. It's either the ninth or the twenty-third.
Nick, I think then the other question I would have is, I mean, I get the, the fact that we won't have that incremental tax income, but are there also impacts when it comes to calculating aid? Does that, even though we aren't getting it, I mean, is the assessed value going up? Does that, this is where my school funding calculations start to hurt?
We just basically, we basically freeze, but where it could help hurt us down the road, and Tim can speak, is is all of a sudden you could have a tremendous amount of property value come online all at once. Which could make us look like a more property rich district. Now that might be, typically these are twenty-two year TIF districts.
Up, yeah, I think up to twenty-seven.
Is it up to twenty-seven? The la- the last one was twenty-two. I think the dog track was twenty-two.
Yeah, yeah, it kind of depends on how successful the district is. I mean, they can, they can close them earlier and then you bring that property back online. But like Nick's saying, what, what can happen is we'll see a large spike up when they close the district. We see a large spike up in property value and that, uh, will really impact our negative tertiary aid because our property value per student goes way up. But on the, on the same, by the same token, on the other hand, not having that value on our books, the incremental value that grows over time, that helps to repay the bonding on the project. Um, that keeps our, that keeps our mill rate, it kind of suppresses our mill rate, you know, as we go through a process. So, I mean, it's, it's a little bit of a double edged sword. And it just depends on how, you know, how soon they can close out that project, how successful the project is.
Okay. Anything more on superintendent reports?
Nope, that's it. Sorry it took so long.
Okay. Well, we get started on the reports and we'll see where there might be a break that might be appropriate, but, um, seclusion and restraint?
We have a change to the agenda on the seclusion restraint, uh, restraint. We have, uh, we had an error in our, our data to present to you, so we'd like to move it to next month. Um, because we want to make sure we have the most accurate data to present to the board. So that, we would, uh, respectfully request the board strike that from the agenda tonight.
Okay. We'll do that on July ninth, then, uh, multi-level systems of re, of support, MLSS.
Thank you. And I'll start that off. So tonight, Erin, Sandy and I are going to present an update on initiative that we started this spring, but will really be operationalized next year. And we've talked a few times about the concept of RTI, response to intervention over the past few years. The easiest way to describe RTI is as a process for measuring student growth as a direct response to a specific intervention or instruction. And, um, RTI is a super important framework and it helps us describe the what of our teaching and learning processes. Um, it helps us determine which students need additional support and which may no longer need that additional support. And it's also part of the process for identifying a student with a specific learning disability. Today, we're going to talk about the, the initiative we kicked off referring to as RTI reimagined. And the following are a few definitions that describe this fresh look at RTI. The R is for rigor. We describe that as challenging and engaging work that allows all of our students to exercise higher order thinking and problem solving strategies. T is for teamwork and we describe this as student success is maximized when adults and students work collaboratively. So we need to break down barriers to allow teachers and staff to work collaboratively to meet the needs of all their students. And the I is for inclusion. Um, inclusion means increasing access to core curriculum and programs for all students. Uh, we'll be, we'll be working to remove barriers for students to reduce the reliance on siloed supports for students. We want our classrooms and learning environments to be welcoming and supportive of all of our students and their learning goals. These concepts that I described get a little bit to the how of the way we meet the needs of all of our students. Thank you. We're on the next slide there. So this visual is created in twenty seventeen by the state of Wisconsin by DPI and it describes their multi-level systems of support. Um, RTI is often now referred to as a multi-leveled systems of support, which is a little more inclusive definition than simply RTI response to intervention. And there is a lot of information in this visual that helps us frame our system. Um, as we build and implement our system, we're going to consider a lot of things. Data from the state report card, which points to a need to improve in the area of student growth and closing the gaps for particular subgroups of students. And we plan to build more programmatic equity and access to rigorous and engaging learning activities for all of our students. Um, and our plan will also guide our federal Every Student Succeeds Act or ESSA plan. And we'll bring more information to you about that ESSA plan at our next meeting on June eighteenth. Next slide, please. As part of our work on this, we explored three important concepts and they're up there on the screen. Uh, core curriculum, this is our guaranteed base of what we believe all students should know and be able to do, know and be able to do. We believe that eighty-five percent of our students should be successful in the core curriculum without any additional support. And what we mean by that is there's all sorts of things we can do to support our students in addition to the core curriculum. If we get into a situation where more than eighty-five percent of our students aren't meeting the needs with the core, we end up developing a lot of systems that pull students away from the core and then create a less inclusive model than we'd like to see. Um, the fidelity component, this describes our adherence to our curricular instructional expectations. This year, we focused heavily on increasing clarity and consistency in our curriculum to support stronger fidelity. And finally, equity. Um, equity is a concept that, as you know, has many interpretations and definitions. For the purpose of this presentation, equity means all students having access to our core curriculum and that all students receive the support they need to be successful. We often just simply describe this as all means all when we're referring to our students. This last spring, we had a team of over forty teachers, specialists and administrators exploring these important concepts and creating the first part of a multi-year plan, which you'll hear more about tonight. And we also spent quite a time, quite a bit of time exploring the why behind our MLSS system. Uh, we believe that we needed to pull this team together to build a sense of urgency, to build a sense of where we want to go, to increase our inclusion and to increase our rigor. Uh, with that, I will pass it to Sandy.
All right. The next slide then shows the evolution of the visuals of the RTI to multi-level systems of support. The first slide shows pretty much the traditional RTI model when it first came out, showing tier one is your core. Tier two then provides additional support and tier three then more intensive support. Uh, picture number two, again, still has the triangle, but now it's added not only the academic portion, but also the behavioral side. So that's why you see that PBIS, so the positive behavioral interventions and supports. Slide three then starts moving into, this is a DPI visual, the multi-level systems of support. And this, um, shows us that as far as the state of Wisconsin, they never mandated the triangular three-tier model. They really want a more collaborative, uh, model for districts to put in place. And we're looking at again, both behavior and academics and wanting more success for all students. Then number four, the most current, uh, DPI picture of multi-level systems of support. Here we see everyone is included. So they want to incorporate family and community along with quality teaching and strong leadership. And this is one that we think really reflects what we're trying to do here in Hudson as well. The yellow circle in that last picture shows the move from multi-level systems of support to strong universal level continuum of support. And that very center orange circle, you see a shift then from three to four, from culturally responsive to practices to equity. And the blue triangle pretty much in the center there as well moves from balance assessment to strategic use of assessment. So you can see how it really lines up with some of the work that we're doing in the district. On the next slide, then you see the guiding principles of multi-level systems of support. And this lines up very much with our district work with professional learning communities. Um, as you can see in the bottom, it references that this comes from Mike Mattis, who is a solution tree, um, author and presenter. So you can see that we're looking for. So, you can see that we're looking for all of our students in that collective responsibility, that all, as a grade level, as a school, we're all taking responsibility for all students. Concentrated instruction, again, we want teams to identify the essential learning or standards for each unit as they plan for, for instruction. And number three, converge in assessment, teams, again, review a variety of data to determine effectiveness of our, of instruction. And then number four, cer- certain access. There is a system, we need to make sure we have a system in place to ensure students receive what they need. On the next slide then, core curriculum as an equity issue. Equity means every student has access to the resources and educational rigor they need at the right moment in their education. The work of our K-12 grade level and department professional learning communities is to collaboratively plan instruction based off of district priority standards, to administer common assessments, analyze student data, and use existing structures and resources to differentiate and personalize learning. Our goal, as Dave said, is to ensure that our core curriculum meets the needs of most of our students. Erin?
Want to go to the next slide, please? So, in order to focus our work, we really developed the, a belief statement and then goals to kind of guide where we're moving. Um, so why us why now? We believe all of our students are regular education students first. Furthermore, we believe that students benefit when teachers and specialists collaborate at high levels on their behalf. To that end, by the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, HSD will utilize a co-teaching inclusive model as part of the continuum of special education services. Um, additionally, tier-two interventions will be delivered in an inclusive model whenever possible. Um, we believe these equitable practices benefit all students. Really, we're focusing on closing the gap, um, in our English Language Arts and math. Um, and then increasing, um, our inclusion as measured by, um, our environmental code data, and I'll go over that in a second, re-measure the extent to which students with disabilities are served within the regular classroom. Um, so that's something that we're really working on. And then eighty-five percent of students will meet the grade level expectation within the core without any additional support. So, one of the data points that we look at when we analyze, when we're talking about access for students, especially the students with IEPs, is, um, environmental code data. So, this describes the level to which students with IEPs are served within the regular education environment. So, if you look at our data over the last six years, we're kind of hanging out around that fifty percent mark, meaning that about fifty percent of our students with IEPs are being served within the regular ed classroom, eighty percent or more. Does that make sense? Okay. Um, and so when we look at other districts who are showing promising practices in closing gaps for students with disabilities, their environmental code data is much higher than ours. Um, and so they tend to utilize more inclusive practices, um, as identified in their data. So, we really want to dig into that more too and look at what are they doing, um, to close those gaps? So, we know that change takes time. Uh, with that in mind, we've developed a long-range plan to reach our goals in both tier-two and special education practices. By intentionally identifying what steps we'll take each year, it allows us time to engage staff as well as examine and address successes and barriers along the way. Questions for us?
Heather?
Yeah, thanks Erin. So, question, I mean, are, is our environmental code data is pretty significantly below the state average? I'm wondering if that's because of pendulum swings? I mean, is it, is it because we've built such great programs that are serving kids with special needs and have therefore pulled them out of the classrooms to use those pro- I mean, so is that a bit of a pendulum back and forth?
I think, I think potentially that is what we're looking at. Um, so the state average is around like sixty, sixty-two percent. Um, but, you know, when we look at really high-performing districts, I mean, some districts are at eighty-two or, you know, around that too. So, it's, it's trying to find the sweet spot for Hudson and making sure that, um, our kids have access to the rigorous curriculum as well.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think it's on. And so, Dave mentioned equity, all equals all. Um, we've talked a lot about curriculum and, um, is mainstreaming the right term?
That, that's a, yeah, that, that's a term that describes the same sort of situation. Um, mainstreaming is a little more limited in its definition, so we want to look at a full continuum of services. We're talking not only about students with disabilities, but students that may receive some additional math support, may receive some additional reading support, but aren't identified as having a learning disability. We still want to increase the inclusion for them as well. Uh, we have a lot of programs that are geared to meet the needs of students, and they're, they're delivered well. But the more we can pull students back into the classroom and provide the extra support there so they can be successful, the better off all of our kids will be.
Do we have the, and we've been talking about facilities and inadequacy and what have you. Do, do we have the facilities we need, especially at the elementary level, to accommodate this properly or?
Yeah, I, I believe we do. I mean, we could always improve definitely and find ways to specifically meet the needs. But a good example is if you look at the high school design, so much of it's built around this idea of bringing multiple people together to meet the needs of students. Um, elementary is honestly a little bit easier to do that because the classroom is the core of so much of what happens. So, uh, the facilities really wouldn't limit this. Might we look at ways to, to specialize certainly, but not to the point where I'd consider it limiting?
So, maybe enhancement, but not?
Sure.
Mr. President?
Yes, bro.
Where does Strive sit in this and how they're viewed? Is it a regular classroom setting? How is that maybe?
Strive is a regular education program. I, it sometimes serves students with IEPs within that program, but it's not a, I mean, it is a specialized program, but it doesn't follow to the criteria of special education.
Okay, thanks. I, I just wanted to clarify.
Any other questions? Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Now, we move on to department accomplishments and highlights. Uh, and these are in an order. Do you want to stick with this order?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
So, we'll go ahead and we'll start it off, and they're going to kind of give you a department highlights and, as they talked about, uh, touch on some of the things that were in the, uh, items that they provide you in the board packet. But then if you have any questions or anything, feel free to ask.
Whatever you feel comfortable.
Um, so my name is Sue Helmers. I'm at Holton Elementary, and I'm happy to be here tonight to share this year's highlights from Holton. Um, our focus this year at Holton was continued growth of all students. Um, kind of mimics a lot of what was just shared with Dave and Erin and Sandy. And we used the NWEA MAP assessment to measure growth. That's one of the things that I'll share as part of our SMART goal. Um, we had set a goal of sixty-six percent of our students reaching their reading growth target and ended up having sixty-nine percent of our K-five students. So, we were pleased that we're still seeing kids continuing to grow and that, um, we're implementing strategies that's helping this to happen. Um, we identified a group of kids that had not met their growth target for two years, and we really focused on those kids. And we were able to get ninety-three percent of those kids to meet their growth targets this year. So, we're very pleased about, um, making sure that kids are just continuously moving forward. Uh, we also had ninety-three, or sorry, we also had, I wish it was ninety-three. Sixty-four percent of our students, um, were at or above the sixtieth percentile, which is college and career-ready. Um, across the district, one of the instructional strategies that we've really been implementing are the PLCs, where teachers are getting together to talk about student data and plan. Um, so we really implemented the practice of using formative data in a really intentional way. And so, teachers worked throughout the district. Elementary teachers met and collag- collaboratively planned pre-assessments and gave those to students. And then, based on the results and the data from those pre-assessments, adjusted and, um, continued to adjust instruction throughout the unit and then did a post-assessment to see where kids were at. Our goal was, was to have ninety percent of our students meeting grade level expectations at the end of the unit based on our pre and our post-assessment, um, information. And we were able to get seventy-nine percent of our students, which I felt was a success because this is the first time we've really formally taken that information and intentionally used a pre and post for some units to make sure, um, kids were making progress. Teachers felt very good about what they saw in terms of growth and felt that students really, um, had a deeper understanding of what they were doing. We've also at Holton continued our use of our outdoor space, um, in utilizing the area that we have out there. Um, if you have been out in that area, you've seen the development of the trailhead, the bike path, um, coming across from the St. Croix River Crossing. Um, we are working in conjunction and collaboratively with the Bike Coalition, Coalition, St. Croix County, St. Joe Township, the State Departments of Transportation, the FIP Center, St. Croix Valley Foundation, all sorts of people on an art bench to be, um, placed along the St. Croix Art Bench Trail. So, we've been working very closely with FIPS. Um, right now, we are in the fundraising stage. We are, um, getting the money, and then eventually, our third and fourth grade students will be working on designing and then eventually building the art bench over in, um, the properties directly across from Holton. Um, so we're still negotiating where it's going to go and what it's going to look like, but we're in that process right now. Oh, is that the time? Last year I went over, and I have not heard the end of it. So, um, with that, those are the Holton highlights.
Oh dear, no pressure there. Okay, am I on there? Okay. I also want to thank you for the opportunity to do this. It, it, um, gives us a chance to highlight some of the things in our building and, and listening to the previous presentation too. It sounded a little Greek, and so I'm sure to some of you too, the, oh, now, come on. So, so for the next, this board meeting and the next board meeting, you're going to hear lots of numbers, and I want to kind of bring some of those, uh, numbers to light um, in a way that has you understand the work of our teachers and the support that we receive from you, um, makes a huge difference. So, we too, um, focused on helping every student make a year's worth of growth in reading. Uh, we had fifty-five new students join us this year at Rock. It's fairly typical. Um, that's about a, with the students that also leave, we have about twenty to twenty-five percent mobility. And when we're talking about tier one, we need to teach kids to read. And we want those classroom teachers to deliver high-quality instruction in the classroom and then provide those additional supports as needed for all of our students. So, we, um, had a lot of students that, um, just needed high-quality instruction in the regular classroom, other students who needed more support in reading. So, some students, even at the end of the year, um, did not reach the grade level expectation. You'll see lots of numbers. Um, but they made more than a year's worth of growth. And so, that's our goal, um, for especially our students that are not reading at grade level. We have to focus on trying to close that gap. Um, as an example, we had a second-grade student who started the year, um, with us, reading, um, at a B, which is about mid-kindergarten. And he finished at an I, which is almost two years' worth of growth in, in one year's time. So, he did one year plus three levels. Um, and that's how we look at a lot of our reading growth. We're also using our MAPS results to help us, um, have kids meet their reading goals by the end of the year. Um, and that will help us close, close the gap. Some of our actions were also related to teacher-staff development. Um, we focused, and this was true in a lot of our buildings, um, so each of the elementary principals will highlight one of the things that teachers did to improve reading instruction and reading results. Um, we taught kids they needed to focus on writing about what they were reading or hearing. So, they learned to annotate which adults might call, annotate, um, but it's citing text evidence. So, all the way from kindergarten through fifth grade, they had to find text evidence to help, um, help them in reading. And, um, this was across the district that we focused on that. We also started a homework club before school. Um, it started after the kids got off the bus so that it could help every student that needed that fifteen minutes of support in the morning. Um, we had, um, we celebrated this year our twentieth, um, year for our mentor program. We have more and more fourth and fifth graders involved in mentoring our younger students, helping them, um, practice their math facts, playing a game or reading social stories. And all of our new students, um, were involved in new student groups that helped orientate them to the building and also their families to be part of our system to help their kids be successful in school. Um, we're very proud of that, and thank you for all of your support this year.
I didn't hear it go off.
So, financial services? Looks like Mark's going to be giving this?
So, yeah, Mark's going to do the second part. I'll do the first part. Um, so under referendum, uh, we've done a lot of work on request-for-proposal processes, including interviewing and selection processes. So, uh, we looked at that process for both high school and middle school. We, uh, culminated with the building commissioning services through KFI. Uh, we worked through a, a fitness equipment process, interviewing, uh, various firms there and completed that process. And fitness equipment is on order. And then, uh, of course, the big one was the, was the one-point-three million for the furniture order for the high school. So, um, those things are all, all coming along i- in the process. Um, the cafe plan, that's, uh, I would say that's not the cafeteria, that's the cafe. That's directly off to the side from the commons area. Uh, working with nutrition services and the high school on that project. And so, uh, we're pretty excited on that one. That one is something where we're looking at products, branded coffee, grab-and-go items, but also expanding that into the curriculum side and working with students, uh, to staff that store, um, or staff, staff a cafe. So, uh, that's coming along. We're pretty excited about that. Um, another thing we're doing right now, capital campaign, uh, looking at, um, raising funds that think for things that are more of wants. Uh, there's interest level from booster groups on doing, for example, a video scoreboard rather than just the score, the regular scoreboard that we had budgeted in a project. So, we're, we're exploring that opportunity and just, uh, talking to various booster groups right now. And, and, uh, so we're hoping that, uh, we'll, we'll raise somewhere around, around the neighborhood of a little over a hundred thousand dollars for some of those want, more want items um, versus the, kind of the basics that we had budgeted. Um, servery design, uh, we, it was an area that, uh, we kind of went back and forth on in the project, and this is the existing servery. Uh, we went through and, um, really got our, our design consultant and, uh, the architect, project architect from Bray and the district team together on that to finalize some improvements there. So, creating some sopits and additional lighting and then flooring pieces, really to make that in a, in an appealing place for students when they come in. Uh, and that's, a lot of it is, is important. A lot of the marketing is important as we go through this, uh, process for, uh, food service. And lastly, the portable classroom space. Works are processed to place six of those portable classrooms. As, as you all know, um, included walking through the units, looking at the different improvements and, and repairs that needed to be made on those, uh, pieces, and then, uh, finalizing lease agreements. And now, of course, the, uh, high school offices are, are in there. Um, I'm sure they're glad that it's just temporary. So, uh, under operations, uh, looking at concessions. What we did for the opening last year is we really restructured concessions. We had several different groups operating concessions, so everybody operated it differently. We didn't have any consistency in that. So, what we did was, uh, really bringing the finance, the purchasing, inventory, uh, cash flowing, all of these things in-house in the district. So, it brought in consistency, and we've got more tracking than we've had before, being able to have more measurements in place for concessions. Uh, but all the while, allowing the various groups to still come in, run concessions, and, and fundraise. So, um, that piece, we continue to, to kind of tweak, uh, as we go along. Um, nutritional services planning, that's the two-year action plan that was developed. And, and, uh, most of you, we brought that plan forward a few months ago, creating that two-year plan to look at marketing and culinary and just really, uh, generating, really generating. marketing and culinary and just really generating, really generating student interest in the program again. Long-term maintenance and capital improvements, again, working with facilities and grounds and our consultant on that project completed a long-term maintenance and capital improvement plan. We're working on, we've got a number of projects from that plan incorporated into the capital improvement projects for the, in the operating budget for the 18, 19 school years. So, we are continuing to move forward with that. And then finally, safe routes to schools. Safe routes to schools, work with principals, city and village department heads, and a bike, local bike association to complete a Phase One for safe routes to schools. What that, what that does for us is it gets us a plan and then we can move forward to work with the city on some, on some smaller items. And then, with the end goal of mine is being in a Phase Two plan where we are actually able to go and competitively, do a competitive grant that could bring well into six figures where we can have, improve these routes for students. So, students might be able to bike or walk and parents will feel good about the safety as those kids are making their way to and from school. So, that's it. And I'll turn it over to Mark for some additional information.
Thank you. And before I get into the items, I just wanted to mention quickly that these are really just a reflection of the accomplishments of our team this year. I'm very fortunate in our financial services office, we have a pretty strong team in there and we were able to work with some other departments and colleagues to collaborate on a number of these things. So, even though I'm the one that's going to briefly highlight them tonight, it really is, just wanted to recognize that much appreciated work that they've put into this as well. One of the first things that I want to highlight is the teacher's salary structure. You've heard a lot about that through these few years and we're in that final implementation year where we've had some more complicated calculations related to the cycle adjustments and some of the processing on our end. So, we're happy to kind of get through that last and final year. We've gotten better at some of our efficiencies and accuracies as it comes to tracking that system, so we've had some good success there. We've continued the expansion of the credit card online, the credit card payment system. Tim mentioned a little bit about, you know, the concessions and part of that was allowing people to pay with credit cards and some of those things. So, we helped assist with that as well this year. The support staff compensation system, we just finished up with the teachers, kind of getting through the three years, now we're on to support staff. So, we've been collaborating with human resources on a lot of that development and making sure we work through the budgetary impacts of those and the sustainability of some of those pro, some of those systems. One of the other things that we had done in our office this year was we kind of improved the connection between financial services staff and kind of when it comes to the education of our, of our kids here at Hudson School District. And one of the ways that we had done that is we had collaborated with EP Rock Elementary, where we had a lot of our staff spend some time and go with students and their student literacy connection program. And it really allowed our staff an opportunity to interact with not only students within the elementary school, but also staff members as well. So, that was a real positive experience in our department this year. And then, the final two things are things you've heard about before, but are just continuing to manage our self-funded insurance. We've, as you can see, we've had, and you're aware, we've had some pretty good savings there. So, it continues to be a positive point for us. And then, our audit and budget, we continue to have very successful audits where we have the highest auditor opinion upon modified when they go through our audit. And then, our budget wrapped up this year with a small variance on the revenue of just 0.3% budget to actual and our expenses were, expenses were only 1.8 budget to actual. So, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
I have a question. Tim or Mark, is there any plan going forward next year to look at potentially online purchase for the musical or concerts?
Sure. Do you want me to talk about it quickly? Yep. So, one of the things that we run into that is it's real elimination of our vendor right now. So, there's, they don't have the capability of probably what you're referring to, having a nice ticketing system where you could purchase seats for the auditorium and things like that along those lines. So, we're kind of starting to look into that and maybe pursue some alternative options. It's something we were hoping that they would have developed for us up to this point, but it hasn't been yet. So, we're hopefully going to get that one moving ahead, but we're still kind of in some early stages of trying to see if there's a, another alternative that we could use versus our current vendor that we have now.
Bruce?
Yeah, I was just curious regarding the long-term maintenance and capital improvements, is that something you'll be bringing forward in one of the upcoming meetings, just in terms of what those projects are that you're kind of slating for next year?
Yes, we will talk about those as we go through budget. We'll highlight those.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Appreciate the update.
And the high school?
Thanks for having us tonight. Defending a position and providing evidence to back up that decision is really a life skill that I suspect all of us have a part in, in our, in our careers and our workplace. And that's the goal that we've been working on at the high school for the past three years. How do students learn to take a position, to argue that position, and then to back it up with evidence that supports that particular position? And we have a goal by 2020 to have 85% of our high school students be able to do that. We definitely made strides, made our targets this year in both the growth goals and the proficiency goals. So, we looked in terms of growth, how do we make sure that every student, no matter if they're scoring at a one, or if they're scoring at a three, or scoring at a four, either maintain progress or at least grow in one or more areas? So, we're really pleased with that particular success. Some of the other pride points are, we were identified as number seven in the state of Wisconsin for best high schools by U.S. News and World Report. We were designated as an AP pace setter school, which is the highest level, a Level One. We were a PLTW distinguished school. A point that we really targeted is, as you know, our 2025 goal is that every high school student receive at least one credit post-second, at least have an opportunity to take at least one post-secondary course. And one piece that we were really targeting for our free and reduced populations, after looking at the data, is that we had many less free and reduced students taking the AP test because of the cost of the test. And so, we specifically, through our counselors and through our AP coordinator, really reached out to kids that had free and reduced lunch issues. And we were really, really pleased. We had 23 students and 83% of those students actually took the AP exam. This year made possible in part by donations, including those to our angel fund. And so, again, targeting a group that in the past hasn't had the kind of success rate in AP testing was something that we were really proud of this year. Probably the biggest pride point that I had at the high school this year is the response by my staff and by my student population to really challenging and sometimes daunting conditions. And our discipline rate actually went down. We, in some of the ways that we structured our restorative justice, some of the ways that we really looked at moving toward behavioral contracts, all of those kinds of things really made a difference this year. But, I'm really proud of my staff and my student body. Thank you.
And then, we'll do, we'll do the 4K report and then we'll take a brief recess.
As you know, this was our first year with the Hudson Community 4K Program. And just to give you some numbers, we had 295 students start and 306 students end throughout the course of our first year, which I feel was some really great numbers provided, or especially since we kind of got it up and running in a short period of time. At this point, we have roughly 275 students registered. I think there's more, but you have to register with the district and with the sites. And so, we have, if we count both of those registration pools, we have a large number. But, those that are registered with our district is about 275. So, we're in a really good place. Of the 175 families that I surveyed at the end of the school year, they were given a scale of one to five, five being extremely satisfied. 94% said they were satisfied or extremely satisfied with their child's overall experience with 4K and 91% said they were satisfied or extremely satisfied with their overall experience with 4K. I was telling Dave, the first couple of responses that came in were the squeaky wheels and I was like, oh, boy. But, I was really pleased that, you know, we, there were some hiccups along the way, just things that hadn't anticipated or just things that came up unexpectedly. But, I feel like the community really felt like it was a great experience, particularly for their child, but also for them as a parent. Following areas were ranked as being positively affected by the 4K experience, social 93%, academic 86%, emotional 71%, and behavior 65%. I think one of the telltale signs is that our kindergarten teachers noticed that the kids that came in for kindergarten orientation this spring were noticeably, in most of the buildings, were noticeably ready to sit, listen, to partake in a conversation, discussion, pay attention to a story. I had several kindergarten teachers say to me after the orientation this spring, wow, I can really tell some of those kids have gone through this program. Other highlights, as you know, we had 11 partner sites and two school sites. We had two, sorry, one co-taught classroom, which was a regular ed and a special ed teacher. And a lot of our district's special ed students were in that classroom. Next year, we are expanding that to two and those will be at North Hudson and Hudson Prairie. We had monthly 4K advisory council meetings where I met with the directors and some of the teachers every month to just kind of go over things that were coming up, questions, concerns that they might have. We did some professional development on how to refer a student, handwriting things, just kind of topics that the directors had brought to my attention. We did 87 and a half family outreach hours, which is a huge part of the 4K program, is getting the families involved in different things. And so, we had an event every month, a district-wide event, and we collaborated. I assigned each site a month or two sites a month that they worked together to plan the event. And I felt like that was a very successful part of the program as well. Next year's focus is going to be on sort of fine-tuning our assessment and increasing our communication with families. Those were two things that came up. The assessment piece from the teachers, the tool we had this year was a little cumbersome, so we're going to streamline that. And parents in the survey requested additional communication and just information on what was happening and what the students' day looked like and consistency between the sites. Personally, I think the biggest benefit of the 4K program is that every single person involved in this, at every site, really wanted what was best for kids and were willing to be very collaborative and work together. When you think about it, we had partner sites that were somewhat competitive with each other, but when we had our advisory council meetings, everyone really worked for the good of student success. And I think that, that has been a huge plus for not only our students, but our entire community. Thank you.
I was just wondering, with a quick question on this, is are we expecting to do some kind of more survey with kindergarten teachers next year to see the impact of the 4K program other than just, you know, showing up at orientation, but actually, you know, during the year and being able to get feedback?
We could even look at data this fall, just kind of see where they're coming in. You know, just because they, we do a lot of assessments in kindergarten, you know, just kind of formal and informal. I think we'll have some hard data there, but we certainly can put together something.
Yeah. And I agree. And I just, I want to jump in and compliment Sue for the work she's done with 4K because it was fast and furious. We were advised by a few DPI representatives, you might want to give it another year. And we said, no, we're going to go for this. And it was successful, I wouldn't say in large part, but almost entirely because of Sue's work. It was fantastic. And we're excited about next year, the numbers look strong. And I would agree with Sue that looking, the perceptual data will be important, but we're also going to have some hard data to look at in terms of student learning results that we think will be reflected.
Excellent. Yeah, Carrie.
By understanding, I think that a child, if they go to the 4K program, cannot repeat it. But, if a parent sends them, if they're a very young four-year-old and...
Yes, they can.
They can?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The state will support that as well. We looked into that actually quite extensively. So, yes, and we have about 12 this year that are repeating 4K again next year.
Okay. Good.
And we did set some criteria. We have a policy kind of that Dave and I created this year. Again, it was like, oh, whoa, we better put something together for this. And so, we have just like a protocol kind of to follow to make sure that it's in the best interest of the student.
Okay. Thanks.
Very good. All right. Well, then, we'll take a five-minute recess. I guess Andrea, you're going to give us the human resources report?
Yes, I am.
Very good.
Okay. So, with HR department, we have three key drivers. It's people, policies, and processes. I just kind of came up with that summary for the 2017-18 school year. Each is significant in its own way as we work on our mission of customer service and data integrity every day. First, people. This is our primary focus every year. The recruitment and retention of approximately 925 staff, ranging from administrators to certified staff, to support staff, to extracurricular coaches. In terms of recruitment, during the 2017-18 school year, we coordinated the posting and filling of over 50 certified staff vacancies, seven administrator vacancies, about 25 athletic vacancies, and over 100 support staff vacancies. We also conducted a comparability analysis for all staff classifications this spring, ultimately resulting in the board-approved 2% base increase. As part of this increase, we issued over 425 certified staff contracts, over 400 support staff letters of intent, and are in the process of completing the administrator addendums at this time. Terms of retention, I view this issue as multifaceted. It's not just salary and wages. It's also engagement, job satisfaction, clear, well-defined benefits, as well as accessibility and transparency, the support that's provided to staff when they have questions. Whether the question is about their contract or FMLA benefits, we need to answer their questions properly and supportively whenever possible. And I'm proud of my department's growth in this area this year. For example, in 1718, we coordinated over 145 FMLA staff leaves and secured replacements for the absences. This time-intensive process ensures a staff member using the leave feels supported, but also everything is in place for the building and teams affected. Our attention to the human element while still following policies and procedures has increased the positive visibility of our department. We've also tried to infuse more fun when possible, whether it's the extra personal days at the recognition banquet or the first annual wellness walk we had at the Welcome Back, where I was looking at ways to improve engagement and morale. Second is policies. As you guys well know, we are in the second year of our new five-year policy review cycle. As part of this cycle, I've completed the review analysis, board approval, and implementation of the 800 series, as well as significant portion of the 500 series, which is the personnel one. The first grouping of the personnel series involved the nondiscrimination, illegal harassment, and bullying policies, and then rules related thereto. We completed, completely redid these policies, increased transparency in all the rules, in the rules, and put additional safeguards in for our staff and then rolled out these big three, as I call them, to all staff at the building forums. We then successfully implemented the online learning module, Safe Schools, which requires every staff member to complete sexual harassment training. This rollout was very well received by staff and I had multiple phone calls and emails of appreciation and support. So, we will be continuing the 500 series this summer. The last one is processes. So, processes are really the building blocks of HR. For every important task to be completed, there needs to be a clear process for it to be completed with transparency and consistency when possible. For example, background checks for employees and volunteers has proved challenging for the 1718 school year primarily due to construction. 1516, we had 750 background checks. 1500 and 1617, when construction started. 1718, to date, we've run over 2,500 background checks. And every check that finds a criminal record involves additional review and analysis by our department. Second, the processes associated with issuance of contracts and letters has become complicated given the differing compensation systems for staff, for certified staff. We're now completing our third learning year for the TSS system. As part of the system, we continue to gather feedback from staff on cycle through pre- and postplacement surveys, issued detailed contracts and cover letters explaining each TSS element and impact for that particular staff member. For support staff, we developed a new performance-based system with a subcommittee of Hudson Lead. This recently approved support staff compensation retains the current three-step market system and adds on an opportunity for staff to earn more based upon their evaluation. Third, pay system involves members of Hudson Lead, Hudson Lead salary structure, and depending upon individual annual goal attainment, may result in enhanced percentage salary increase. Each of these systems is unique and each requires hand-touching of staff to ensure accurate implementation of the elements and specification on their contracts or letters. An important side benefit of these systems is that for the first time in a very long time, we now have set a... time, we now have set evaluation cycles for every classification and employee in the district, and it's now tracked in HR. So again, people, policies, processes drove our work in seventeen, eighteen, and will continue to do so in eighteen, nineteen.
Very good. Any questions for human resources? Thank you for your report, now on to community ed and community relations.
Sure. So, one of my goals is usually always in here, and that's a district-wide goal, as increasing connections with community and stakeholders, and I assume will be an ongoing goal. And most of the work that I did with regard to supporting the construction communication, you're well aware of, so I won't go into those in detail here. But I will point out the highlights in that opening up the stadium was a huge success for us, and also using the movie format to get more folks into the stadium and have that experience regardless of whether they had a high school student or not. Also here for a highlight is our quarterly newsletters, which, again, I don't see those going away. It's an important tool for us to use in communicating to our community in that we have probably well over sixty, probably close to seventy percent of our community who don't have a direct connection with the school district and needing to continue to provide them with information about what's going on in the district. We don't want to just communicate to our community when we're asking for money. We also have been responding to almost daily, well, at least daily, communications related to questions and connections emails. So people who have questions about what's going, some particular part of what's going on in the district, and we respond to those usually within twenty-four hours, if not sooner. As far as district initiatives that we support in community relations, the elementary attendance boundaries is probably the newest initiative, and my role in that is making sure that our committee members are getting information, but also keeping a list of those key communicators and getting information out to those folks as well. So that includes those folks who didn't get on the committee but still are very interested in what's going on. I started supervision of school age care this summer, but I'm not going to get into that because I'm going to, or this past summer. Michelle's going to report on that program. This year, we also implemented the advertising and sponsorship policy, along with the fees associated with that. We did create the promo package for athletics to reach out to potential funders or people interested in advertising. I'm responsible for managing the brand and logo requests, and we have those frequently, and we've held tight to our brand standards since we implemented that. On the website front, the biggest project we had to tackle was ADA requirements and making sure that all of our website information, as well as social media sites, are meeting those requirements. From a general communication standpoint, we had two videos that were created this fall to promote the opening of the middle school and also the welcome video that we did at the start of the year. I've been working with Willow River Elementary to create a hundredth anniversary video for Willow as we celebrate their hundredth this coming school year. I also support the crisis communication and our safety planning for the school district, providing tabletop exercises at our schools, and also working with the state organizations that are related to Act One Forty-Three, that's the school safety initiative. And then at the end is just some of the other leadership responsibilities in that role. And then for community ed and facility rentals, you've got some data here. The two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, spring, summer data is not complete yet. Our numbers still are a little bit lower with all the construction that's impacted what we've been able to provide, but still, we're doing a great job reaching out to folks and getting people involved in community ed. We have over ninety community ed instructors that serve the school district throughout the year. And during the year, we also offer about six sessions of summer swim, or not summer swim, regular swim through community ed. So, community ed, the department supervises a pool manager, as well as the instructors and the lifeguards through that program. We've also worked to increase the participation in the open gyms that we're offering at more sites. And then you also have here our facility use hours for each of the school sites. And we have about the same amount of facility use permits that were created this year as we did last year. So I think that's kind of impressive, given that so many of our high school facilities were offline, and we still had a similar amount of requests, and we met those requests this year. And also, my department supported the opening of the stadium and auditorium and working with the new position that we just hired for doing all the tech support in both of those spaces.
Any questions for community relations?
Have we had any more success with the advertising in the stadium?
I've actually had a couple of recent requests, and Tim's been more involved in working with the booster groups for advertising.
So the booster groups are trying to sell the advertising?
Yeah.
When you say the advertising, besides the football scoreboard, would that also include basketball scoreboard?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right, next up then is school age care.
Hello, my name is Michelle, and I'm the school age care coordinator. I'm beginning my twenty-sixth year with school age care. Every year, I look forward to what improvements we make, and this year, we saw some significantly positive changes in our program. Recently, we have been updating our program to improve the quality of care we offer and the training our staff receives. Primarily, we have been working to meet Wisconsin childcare licensure requirements where appropriate. Our lead staff have completed the Level One childcare coursework and are currently working on Level Two coursework. All of our full-time caregivers have started the Level One coursework. In addition to our licensure work, we have been aligning our policies to match the district's PBIS behavior expectations. As such, our staff has received updated training on PBIS and strategies. Much of this training has been the result of childcare conferences and our book study program. Our year-round staff attend conferences addressing areas of childcare, and as a result, gain new skills and strategies that better prepare them for working in a childcare program. The book study program works much in the same way. Another way we have improved our program is through the formalization of lesson plans for both our year-round and summer programs. During the school year, each site has a lesson plan book that has detailed plans for the morning and afternoon activities and accounts for what each staff member will be doing. As for our summer program, each staff that leads a class creates lesson plans for each day. The lesson plan details what supplies are needed and any notes for the planned activity. These lesson plans make our program run more efficiently. In addition to these changes, we have improved staff communication in our program by expanding our staff meetings to include program input, feedback, and training concerns. We encourage all of our staff to contribute topics to the agenda. All of these changes are important due to the volume of students we see in our program. On a regular morning, we have more than four hundred students across our five sites, while on a regular afternoon, we have well over three hundred students. This summer in particular, we have welcomed almost four hundred students into our program, and we are still getting new registrations. We have hired seventeen additional staff to join our full-time staff of fourteen. Our summer is split in half with two semesters of classes. Students can choose from over forty-two different classes that our staff have developed and shared on Google Docs. Students can choose classes that are educational in nature, or classes that engage their creative skills. We pride ourselves on the variations in classes we offer, and students enjoy being able to choose their classes based on their interests. Some of the classes we offer include Spanish, math ninjas, time travel, Legos, and Slime Time. We also offer busing to the Red Cross swimming lessons offered at the Hudson Middle School. Another activity students particularly enjoy is our park adventures class, where students travel to a new park or playground in the community every day. Students are also excited to be participating in our Trolls musical this summer. In all our classes, students have the opportunity to participate in interesting and engaging activities. At the end of the six-week semester, students start a new schedule with new courses. Overall, students can choose ten different classes throughout the summer. In all of our classes, we prioritize our staff interacting with the students in planned activities and making sure each student leaves with a smile on their face.
Thank you for your report, Rivercrest.
All right. So at Rivercrest, our smart goal aligned with all of the other elementary schools and the growth that we were looking at. We had a good school report card score from the state, but there's area for growth, opportunity for growth, in helping all students ensure that they're making growth every year. So a couple of accomplishments that we wanted to highlight is that we have sixty-five percent of our students scoring at or above the sixty-first percentile on the NWA map. That's a data point we're looking at continuing to approve, improve, and one of the ways we do that is getting more and more students to meet their growth goals and achieve. So we went from having fifty-nine percent of students meeting their growth goals to having sixty-two percent of students meeting this last year. That's moving in the right direction, and that's what we want to keep on doing. A couple of the things that we've done to help support increasing and improving our achievement is to work with teacher collaboration in the PLC model, like the other schools are doing. And how we do that is looking at student data, figuring out what we need to do as teachers to help students be successful, and taking action in growing our practices so that we can be more successful. Instructional coaching is one of the things that we have in all of our elementary schools that support teacher growth and development. And this past year, we had four hundred and forty instances of our instructional coach engaging with our teachers, looking at their practices, how are they meeting the needs of the students, and helping them improve in their practices to help meet the needs of students. A couple other fun things that I'd like to point out to you that I'm very proud of at Rivercrest was, one was our Day of Service. This was the second year we focused as a whole school community for a Day of Caring for Others Near and Far is what we've titled it. And this year, we worked with Plantables from right here in Hudson, and our students learned about the great local business and then made bee bombs so they could help with our environment and protecting bees. We also learned about Coco's rescue and made toys for families that are adopting dogs. We raised funds for Hope North, a school in Uganda that Okello Sam focused, founded, and you might recognize Okello Sam's name. He's been in the newspaper, he's visited a lot of the elementary schools to share the music of Uganda with our students. Students also made cards and placemats for our local retirement homes and delivered those, and we got notes back from all of these organizations about the meaningful engagement that our students had in these processes. They, special events like that inspire students to become learners and contributors. Another thing that we did this past year was our participation in Battle of the Books for the first time. It's something that other elementary schools at Rivercrest, or in Hudson, have done. It was the first year that Rivercrest took this on under the leadership of Laura Murphy, our media specialist. We had a hundred and seventeen students in fourth and fifth grade, or about sixty-two percent of the students participate in the reading competition. Students' reflections about it being their favorite part of Battle of the Books included reading books that I normally wouldn't read, having to work together as a team and discussing books with my friends, and competing and answering the questions. Our students did a fantastic job competing, and they're excited to do again next year. We culminated the competition with a Friday evening event where it was Camp Reed, and they got to take special pictures, and they had Samore mix, and went over to Camp St. Croix and did a sing-along, and then watched a movie. So we celebrated all of that fun as well. So, thank you for your support of everything, and just a lot of hard work from our teachers and a lot of engagement from our students that make good things happen.
Excellent.
Ms. President?
Yes.
So, you apparently have an outdoor classroom going in? I just drive by and I see it. Is Rivercrest the only one that has the outdoor classroom being put in, or?
Well, I know Hudson Prairie has like that space in their back where they have an outdoor formal gathering space, and I know Holton has something as well, the middle school does as well. So it was something our environmental team and the PTO wanted to put together, so...
It's fantastic.
Yeah, a lot of visioning and fundraising, and yeah, we have an email going out to families now because got to get a lot of things in line to make sure it's really going to happen. But, yeah, thank you.
That's exciting. And may I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
As far as the school age care, how are things going with the Y?
Um...
YMCA? Are they helping?
In relationship to... So that's probably not a question that Michelle could answer real easily.
Sorry.
But, so, we did establish with the Y this year, this is the first year that they have signed contracts and are paying for facility use this year. We will be looking at this year doing, I know we talked before about doing a survey to get some feedback from the families who have participated in that program. I do know that Camp St. Croix has, you know, we raised our fees for school age care this year. We were hoping that it would decrease the gap between the, what Rivercrest families are paying in our school district program. Rivercrest, or the school, Camp St. Croix did increase their fees again, so that larger gap of about a dollar more per session is still there, so it's a valid question for us to be asking of our Rivercrest families about the program and that additional expense that they have. So we'll be looking at that this year.
Ms. President?
Yes.
Would the dollar increase that they are charging our families be in part to offset the fees that we're now charging them?
They've been consistently a dollar over ours, our fee. They have not said that that's what has driven the fee. I mean, it's, since the program started, it's pretty much been that way. So I, I can't say that that's why they increased their...
Okay.
Any other questions for either Rivercrest or school age care? Very none, thank you for your reports. And next up is facilities and grounds.
I have no partner.
Okay. But you have a one-page concise summary.
Do I need to use this or not? Is this on, or? I typically talk plenty loud for people to hear me.
You do with the...
With the video.
Okay, so push it to go on. Oh, it's on, okay. Perfect. Okay, so facilities and grounds, we have been busy this year. I have compiled a list of some projects that were done, but before we launch into that, I just want to point out that this list is, it's not really our primary task. Our primary task here is to clean and maintain the facilities and the grounds for this district. So none of that is included in this list, and that's a pretty daunting task in and of itself. We're just under a million square feet right now, and we're going to be charging past a million square feet, you know, as soon as we open up that high school and hall. We have about three hundred acres of grounds that we take care of. And the second half of this year into mid-spring created a lot of challenges for us for plowing this year. We were very busy. I have a synopsis of some projects that we completed here. I just want to touch on a couple of them rather than going through the whole list, because I really want to focus on bullet points two and three a little bit more today. Tim alluded to before that we did work with Carl Sanderson in creating a ten-year facilities maintenance plan, and there are a few items on this list that we did complete this year that were on that plan, and we just did this out of operating in the project budget. The improvements to the Willa River Cafeteria, including paint lights and acoustical, which we are in the process of right now, was part of that ten-year facility. Installing new playground equipment at Holton, which we worked with Sue and her family group, that was also, playground upgrades were all part of that ten-year facility management or maintenance plan. LED lighting at Willa River Elementary Media Center, LED lighting was pretty much across the board, part of that ten-year facility plan. Installing washbasin restroom in the maintenance garage... Installing washbasins and restroom in the maintenance garages was, hold on, there probably was not a priority one, but we did get that done. And then some more LED lighting at the middle school media center. Does anybody have any questions right now about that project list up top? Because I want to launch into bullet point two and three here. Okay, so bullet point two, referendum project accomplishments. I want to reiterate what Peg said about her staff and kids, they've been fantastic this year. I mean, there was a lot of opportunity for the kids to get in trouble and they didn't. The site was open at times and not as secure as maybe we would have liked to see it, but that was just part of the process. I don't know how you rip a wall down and not, you know, create a bit of an opportunity for kids to find mischief. And you know what, they really didn't do it. She is proud of them for a reason because they were really, really good. And her staff went through a lot of hardships this year. It got dusty and loud and distracting and I just want to reiterate that they did a great job there. So as part of the referendum project accomplishments, we had, we completed all moves associated with the middle school project. That is done, that was complete. We also completed all room moves associated with Phase One, Two, Three, A, B, and C. Those are all complete. We emptied, moved, and stored all contents of the east side and affected west side areas of the high school for the summer 2018 construction. That one I want to talk about a bit. That represented probably 75 to 80% of the contents of that building. It's probably by my estimation, 60 to 70 semi-loads of furnishings, equipment. Some of the stuff was exceedingly heavy, kilns, safes, 50-year-old four-compartment freezers from the kitchen. We broke into four teams and we were done in about 13 hours. So just to put that in perspective, that's about a semi every 13 minutes. So, since this meeting began, we would probably be on our 10th semi right now. They really moved. They did a great job. Plus, we're managing all the items that are coming up that we need to get to auction for sale. There's a lot of contents of the buildings that we've moved out that are not going to be reused but still have a little bit of value and we are storing them and getting them out to the auction site in doses, manageable doses. We've got several garages full of things that are ultimately going to wind up out for auction. Then the third bullet is kind of interesting to me. So I asked my head custodians, because I have head custodian meetings, when Nick and Tim told us that we were going to have to do a report. I reached out to them and I said, you know, I know what we did from the project list and stuff, but I want to get some input from you guys. You know, what happened at your buildings? What kind of stuff did you accomplish there? Because it might not be on the project list. They may tell me, well, I painted the entire fifth grade wing. I didn't know about that. You know, and a lot of the responses came back and I knew, yeah, I got that, I got that, I got that. But there was some really unexpected stuff there for me that just really kind of made me think. So it's stuff like I mentored a fifth grade student. You know, I helped with bus duty for the elementary students. Helped convert the old playground area into outdoor learning space. Volunteered at the Friendship Games. Received votes from the kids as a trusted adult in the PBIS survey. And got to know most of the kids' names at my school. Volunteered at the Celebrate Difference Walk and Run. And it just, it made me realize that, you know, on top of the projects that we're doing and the daily cleaning and stuff, these guys are really interacting with the kids and establishing relationships with them. And kind of valued relationships as it's, you know, with receiving votes from kids as a trusted adult and getting to know all their names and volunteering at the Friendship Games and things like that. It just illustrated to me that the people in the facilities department are really interacting with the kids on a one-to-one basis and hopefully creating a positive image for them and being a role model. That's it.
Questions for Jim?
Ms. President?
Rob?
I have just a couple, well, maybe more than a couple. Do, it's all good stuff. Do you do, when somebody needs something done, does it turn into a work order basically? Or how are you notified that somebody needs something done?
Well, we have work orders. Right now, it's, today, it's a paper process. We are working, Tim and I are working, it's a handwritten note I jotted down here, but I just omitted it because I was trying to be respectful of everybody's time. We are working on an electronic work order system as we speak. We're in the process of trying to do, select a system and then implement it over the next year.
So, do you have a sense of how many work orders you guys take in above and beyond everything else that you're doing today?
You know, Rob, I've never tracked that. I could certainly do it for you for the next couple of months and find out. My guess it would be a couple hundred, but it really only represents maybe 20% of what we do, if that. You know, there's a lot of verbal, a lot of email, a lot of that. One of the things that this work or electronic work order system is really going to help us do is track those volumes because we really get it from a number of different sources. Verbal, phone messages, texts, you know, just everything you can think of.
And the 10-year plan, it sounds like we're making some progress there. Is all that through, does it have to be through KA or are you guys shopping?
No, no, it's not, we're not, we didn't use KA for completing any of these things. They just helped us kind of create that, you know, that data, compile it into a document and then we digested it and we're moving forward on our own without them to start pecking away at it as best we can, just kind of through the annual budget.
No, it's good, save a bunch of money that way. And then this auction, how are we advertising that? How was the public?
Well, it's a public auction, it's Smith Sales. We just take it out to Smith Sales. It's a public website they can go on and see anything. I don't.
That way anybody has an opportunity to look at the items and possibly purchase them. And it's an efficient process for us as well.
Pardon? Do we put that on our website?
We don't put it on our website right now. Possibly something we could look at, but a lot of people know about Smith Sales and if they're interested in that type of thing, they'll go out to that site and look to see what's available.
I was just saying, if it was purchased with taxpayer money, maybe folks who have an interest in it would purchase it.
Sure, yeah, we can look at putting that on the website as well. And that's why we do it, as a public auction.
Jim, could you give us some idea on the first bullet item, I guess? Of all that long list of things, what would you say were all of those items that you wanted to get done at the beginning of the school year? Or are several of those things that come up during the year and you just deal with them and make them fit? Because I'm always amazed at how you do work with Tim's office on the budget and what you try to accomplish over a school year.
Well, that project list never looks the same at the end of the year as it does at the beginning of the year, that's for sure. You know, there's maybe a third of the stuff that was on that list to start the year, but really the other two-thirds is stuff that just comes up over the course of the year and it becomes, you know, an emergent situation. For instance, the pool pump motor, that wasn't on there beginning of the year, but, you know, it came up and it had to get done and it wound up on this list. So, there's a number of things like that. The operable gym wallet at North Hudson wasn't on there at the beginning of the year, but when it broke, it went on there right away. And the things that you've got to have, we got to have the pump motor for the pool, we got to have the operable wallet at North Hudson. It's just stuff that has, it just bubbles up at the top.
Right. Bob?
I was just wondering, is your maintenance staff at the high school responsible for fixing the automatic gates in the back? Or who takes care of them?
I can talk to you about the automatic gates at the high school for hours if you'd like to.
Somebody needs an award for maintaining those because I personally have watched about five different cars bust through those.
Yes, they are, so we're struggling with them and we have let Kraus know and the appropriate parties know that there are issues with those gates. There's two separate issues. There's the issue of them having issues when they get cold, it's functioning. They don't function correctly when it gets cold. And then when we do get them fixed and they're functioning, people drive through. I mean, we just have our own.
I don't think functioning was a problem. I've seen a lot of user error. And also the nets, it seems like such a small thing, the nets behind the practice fields. But all of my neighbors were very concerned about how many footballs and soccer balls would be across the road. And I see very few. I don't know if the kids are really good about it or the coaches have, but those nets that supposedly were going to be a big failure seem to be working pretty decent, according to my neighbors. Thank you, all right.
Hearing nothing else, I guess that, thank you for your report, Jim. And good job.
And thank you for your support too.
And we have, under Topics for Action, we have consent items. Is there a motion based on the language?
Ms. President?
There we go, all right. Yes, Rob?
Move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $8,128,386.03.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Move on then to our only action item that has discussion would be the Activities Code, which we spent substantial amount of time at the work session, but we're looking at finalizing some language and trying to get that in place for this week. Who's taking this?
I am. So this is the draft that you've reviewed previously with the change and updating it to our Hudson district policy. So we are looking for approval on this tonight.
And, refresh my recollection, what were the major questions that we had? As far as the changes that were going to be made? I didn't put this alongside this draft.
Sure, so the major update between the draft that you saw for the work session and this one was the nondiscrimination policy. What was in there before was not the Hudson School District policy and what's in there now is.
All right, very good. That, thank you for reminding me.
Yep, you're welcome.
That's what I, I remember there was one section there that was going to be changed and otherwise it was stuff that was minor, making sure that the pages lined up with the table of contents and whatnot. But I just wanted to say, you know, it was a very good job in trying to have a consistent and updated policy. I know with technology changes.
Sure.
And then you've got the WIA, they have changes and so we're trying to coordinate all of that and still stay consistent to our standards of conduct. So, are there any questions from board members on this? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the policy as presented?
Second.
All right, motion by Heather, second by Bruce. And just to remind you, this, we're approving here at the June meeting because we've got fall sports that start first week of August and we wanted to make sure this gets out to folks. And the other thing we already discussed at the work session was the input. The coaches are all on board with this and they've had, all have had input.
Yep, Steph and Aaron worked incredibly hard on this and researched a lot and talked to a lot of coaches and staff, so, yep.
So if there's individual questions that people have on, when I say people have, that's what I meant, the public, not board members, but the public has, I mean, that's Stephanie's job. I mean, she's there to be able to explain and walk people through and if they have questions. But really trying to make it a progressive plan that builds in some discretion, but also having a lot of clarity of what is and what is not allowed, so. Any further questions, comments?
Mr. President, one quick thing that I just noticed that didn't get caught. The subvention penalty chart, and I'm sorry I didn't catch this before we met today. There was one that we caught that rounded up 25%, of nine should be three, not two. So if we can get that fixed before we vote to approve.
I think he's on it right now. Okay, but it's the cell on the last page 12 of 13. Okay, so with that, is there any other math rounding up that would? But you're right, with the 25% and the 50%, it doesn't always, all right, match up, all right. Just because we have some number of contests that are odd-numbered. That's the way the season works out, but. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the Activities Code with the change that Heather pointed out, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes and the Activities Code for the 18-19 year is approved. I also now entertain a motion to convene to close session pursuant to the language in the agenda.
Ms. President?
Carrie?
The move that we convene to close session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, parent one, parent C, to consider the performance evaluation and contract of administrative employees.
Second.
And this requires the roll call vote? We have Baumann? Brown? Hanson? Logland?
Aye.
Whitaker? Johnson, aye. And we are adjourned to close session and we'll recess to give folks a chance to leave the room.